Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 22, 2019. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:07. And we will first rise for a moment of silent prayer or meditation, which will be immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Vice Chair Shinah Hing. Please rise. All right, thank you. May we have the roll call, please? Mr. Anderson.
Commissioner Holtz.
Here.
Commissioner Hing.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Hockes, and Chairman Redholtz.
Here. Commissioner Hockes should be joining us momentarily. Next is the approval of minutes. Do we all have a chance to look at the minutes? Any corrections, changes to the minutes? Hearing none, they will stand as printed. The next item is oral communication. This is when any member of the public can address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda. I don't have any cards other than agenda items.
No. I am outside.
You have an non-agenda card?
One.
Why don't you go? It's a non-agenda, go ahead and speak, and then you can fill out the card. Chris Miller.
Chris Miller, West Covina resident. You know, it's no mystery that our city needs money. And the other issue we have is there's, we have a lack of officers on the street. And lately, well, not lately, it's been a while, but a lot of people running red lights, causing accidents, and, you know, we've had fatalities, not just the one from carjacking, but other ones. And one thing I've noticed is, you know, when you look at all the fatalities, it's concentrated a lot of times on Larkellon by Bedillo and Roland. And I think one of the reasons is because kind of outside, out of mind, wide open streets, people not paying attention, as opposed to Cameron and Larkellon, which we have a lot of accidents, but you don't have fatalities. If it's pure, like, finances we want, I would probably target Vincent Avenue going from probably Bedillo all the way down to below West Covina Parkway. But I think we need to look at it. I know Gary Galino will probably be mad at me for suggesting this, but I think we should start looking at red light cameras, because we don't have the officers to patrol and bust people. But just coming here to the planning commission tonight, I saw three people running red lights from basically getting off the freeway out of Peck, coming up Working Mill, Sunset, you know. People do it all the time, you see it all the time. In fact, I've posted, you know, happening right in front of a cop car. This way, we don't have any issue of busting those people and making them think twice. And I printed out some information on some studies that have been done. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's not just red lights, they also run stop signs. Okay, anybody else wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, I just want to add that I guess what concerns me, too, is there's so many people on bicycles, like you say, and they don't have any lights. You can't see them at night, and they usually have black on, you know. So I don't know why they don't stop them. I know when I was out there, I'd stop them, and I'd give them a warning the first time, you know, you've got to get a light. So, but it's dangerous, because you get right up on top of them, and you don't even see them, so.
We'll have it on our next agenda, won't we? The (laugh) all right, welcome Commissioner Hockes, who has arrived to join us at about 7:10. Thank you, sir. All right. Now we will go into our item number one, which is the first of two public hearings. And I just want to make a general statement about the public hearings. There's a, there's a 10-day appeal period. Actions taken by the planning commission that are not recommendations to the city council become final after 10 calendar days unless a written appeal or the appropriate fee is lodged with the city clerk's office before they close the business on the 10th day. That pertains to any decision made, especially on these public hearings, okay? So, public hearing number one is a conditional use permit, number 19-10, a categorical exemption. The applicant is Charlotte Wisneski for Leave No Paws Behind at 1407 East Amar Road. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, our planning intern, Baltasar Barrios, will be presenting that report.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission, members of the public. I will be presenting a presentation detailing the application, CUP 19-10, for Leave No Paws Behind Veterinary Hospital at 1047 East Amar Road. So just some background onto the site. So this is the shopping center located on the northeast corner of Amar Road and Valenda Avenue. The general plan designation is commercial. To the north and east of the shopping center, there are single-family residential properties within the city of West Covina. And to the south and west, to the south and west of the shopping center are single-family residences within the county of Los Angeles. And as mentioned, the environmental determination is a categorical exemption, class one for existing facilities. The entire building square footage for the shopping center is 64,621 square feet, and the amount of parking spaces provided are 237 parking spaces. And here is an aerial detailing where the proposed veterinary hospital is going to be located on the shopping center. And I'm going into details about the parking before diving further into the application itself. So currently, the shopping center provides 237 parking spaces. The amount of parking spaces required, if all the square footage of the shopping center was designated as retail, would be 259 parking spaces. And this, and so that means the site is currently underparked. The reason for this is because when the site was approved in 1973, the amount of parking spaces required back then was 220, and the applicant at the time sufficed, met the requirement by supplying 237. So staff conducted an informal parking survey to determine the availability of the parking, of parking on the east side of the center, where the veterinary hospital is going to be located. A total of 29 spaces were surveyed. And here is a map detailing the overall site plan. And here is the area that was surveyed. So over the duration of the informal parking survey, we found that the max amount of spaces occupied would, at a given, at any given time, was 10 spaces. And so we, so staff went out there between, you know, between the hours of 6:30, 6:45 to, you know, 8:30 to 9 o'clock in the morning. And again, as I mentioned, the most amount of spaces that were occupied at any given time was, was 10 spaces. Staff is currently unaware of any other parking problems on the shopping center. But yes, staff has determined that there are, you know, that there is an availability of spaces on that portion of the shopping center. And here are photos of the existing site and the adjacent businesses next to it. Now we dive into the business operations plan of the veterinary hospital. So the applicant will occupy an existing 1,970 square foot tenant space on the east side of the shopping center. The veterinary hospital will offer veterinary services to domesticated household pets, and the business will not offer overnight or long-term boarding of any animal. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the capacity at any given time will have, will be a max of nine employees with five customers. And the, the clients will have to schedule an appointment before coming to the business, so it is an appointment-based business. And the employees will be parked, will park to the rear of the building, as stated in the conditions of approval. And here is a detailed site plan showing specifically where the business will be located. And here is the floor plan for the veterinary hospital. So based on the findings, and staff recommends that the planning commission adopt their resolution approving conditional use permit number 19-10. And that concludes staff's presentation. If any members of the commission or public have any questions, I believe the son of the applicant is here to answer any questions that staff or the public might have.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions of staff before we invite the applicant? Nope? You have a question? Commissioner Kennedy, go ahead.
How many, how many stalls are in behind, behind the business in the back? I, I know there, I know there's some parking stalls behind there.
So staff counted that there were, on this portion, there were eight stalls. And here, while it mentions 13, there's actually 12 stalls to the rear.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Hockes?
Yeah, just for the clarification of those stalls in the, in the rear, how many? Are there two that are ADA stalls?
Yes, two to the front of the shopping center are ADA.
In the back?
Oh, in the rear. There were not any ADA spaces to the rear of the building.
Normally ADA spaces are supposed to be near the entrance, so they probably wouldn't have them in the back.
Any other questions? I'll turn off here. Okay, Frank Wisneski? Come on up, please, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Frank Wisneski. I am the son of the applicant, of the woman who filed the applicant. I will be managing the veterinary clinic when it opens. Fingers crossed it does open. We're a, we're, we're an animal rescue founded in 2011, specializing in senior and hospice care and end-of-life senior animals. So we've been in animal rescue for the last, since 2011, pulling animals from LA County shelters that were deemed unadoptable or were set to be euthanized due to medical issues. Through that process, we did, we have discovered a tremendous need. One of the biggest issues facing people today is exorbitant veterinary costs. And a lot of the reasons why some of these animals wind up in shelters is because people can't afford their basic medical care. If they have, if an animal has cancer or, or, you know, a disease, it gets to be very expensive very quickly, and there isn't insurance to cover it like there is for, for people. And through that process, we decided that there was a great need to open a low-cost veterinary clinic. I'm a West Covina resident, so our first choice was obviously to establish it in West Covina. I live right up the street. And our whole, our whole, our whole point is to, is to, because we know that veterinary costs are very expensive. Our target market will obviously be seniors, low-income families. We tend to draw, we picked a location that was easy to get to between the 57, the 10, the 210, the 60. It's very easily, it's very readily located for people to come out of the area and things like that. I'm not very good at this part.
No, you're, you're good.
I don't know. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, recently, I'm a dog lover. Recently, there's been some change about when they can put dogs down and all that. It's been, I'm not exactly sure how it was, it was worded, but something was they can't put them down, they have to try to adopt them out and all that type of thing. So, a couple of questions I have for you. Where are you going to get your income to pay for the two vets and the vet techs and all that?
So we are a, we're a low-cost vet clinic, but we're not a no-cost vet clinic.
Right.
So we will be charging for services. They will just be at a much more reduced cost than going to a typical, typical vet clinic.
I know it's very expensive. I can show you some of my bills.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. And then if you, I know she said there's no overnight boarding and stuff like that. So what do you do if you get a dog in there that's, if you will, terminal, or, you know, should be in a hospice, or whatever you call them? Where, where do you put them?
So we will be contracting with, with a, with an emergency after-hours, emergency vet hospital, and all the animals will be, if we have any animals that, that need to be required to stay overnight because they had a surgery and they weren't able to go home, would be transported to an emergency vet clinic for 20, for overnight surveillance.
All right, you mentioned that some of them have cancer and all that, and it's, you know, there's, there's really no hope. Will you be putting any of these animals down?
So we will authorize, we will offer euthanization services if, if required, if deemed medically necessary.
How are you going to let people know? Are you going to let these dogs be adopted out if somebody's interested?
So the, the vet clinic will be open to the general public. These won't be, these won't be animals that'll be provided for, these aren't animals that will be rescued and then will be, will be set for adoption. These will be, you know, will be a vet clinic open to local residents for them to come and bring their own pets in. Now, our rescue, the way we run our rescue, our rescue is all foster-based. So we don't rescue an animal unless we have a foster for it to go to.
Okay.
And so we will obviously take care of those animals at our vet clinic, but they already have a place, they already have a foster in place prior to us pulling them from the shelter.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions of the applicant? No. So is, does it operate like a traditional veterinary office would during the day?
Yes, yes. We'll be doing, you know, spay and neuter, vaccinations, you know, all of the, all of the basic wellness exams we'll, we'll offer. We will offer basic surgical procedures, things like dentals, you know, anything like that. You know, God forbid somebody has, you know, an end-of-life scenario, we will offer, you know, euthanization. But yes, it will be operated just like a standard.
Okay, but you don't do emergencies and, you know, if somebody has a...
No, we're not going to offer 24-hour services or anything like that.
Okay.
We will have, we'll, you know, if you were to, if you were a patient of ours and you were to call a number at 7 o'clock or 8 o'clock, there'll be a message on an ass machine saying, you know, please do this, that, or the other thing.
Okay.
So you can still get your animal taken care of.
Okay. And you're fine with the parking?
Yes, we are.
Situation?
Yes, we read the report and the recommendations, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Anything else for this gentleman? Commissioner Holtz?
There's a lot of adoption agencies out there that take in dogs and foster dogs and all that and try to adopt. And I know before they can be placed, they have to be examined in whatever shots they need and all that. And they usually go to special clinics to do that. Will you be one of those?
We would certainly like to offer that service to, to the local rescues and...
Because a lot of times, they don't pay the vet to do that. It's just to, to keep them going, and if they're adoptable, they have to be spayed and all that type of thing.
Correct.
So...
And we're also looking into, I, you know, all of the LA County shelters have, they pass out vouchers.
Right.
For services for people that adopt. We'll be looking into being part of that process also.
So are you hooked up into any of these adoption agencies now?
Well, we are, we are our own rescue.
Okay.
So we are, we do pull our own animals and which are, generally, if they're, if they are hospice-based, they're fostered, but we, we place them in the foster, and we cover their medical costs for the life of the animal.
Okay.
If they're deemed medically healthy, we will place them, we will offer them up for adoption.
Okay.
But generally, the animals that we rescue finish off their life with, with our fosters.
My granddaughter works for a vet, and sometimes people will bring a dog in, not often, but sometimes, you know, to be examined and all that, and they take off and don't pick the dog up again. And it's happening more and more, because, again, because of the expense. What, what would you do in that case?
So obviously, and I know that now West Covina's switched to the, is it the Inland Valley Humane Society?
Right.
We would certainly have a link between us and them for animals that were, that were dropped off. If we, if, if we would, you know, check them for microchips to make sure that, that there isn't another owner involved, try and get the owner involved. But eventually, if we can't find a place for that, I don't want to go, we would wind up calling that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hockes?
The, the rear entrance, the rear door to the hospital, is that going to be an employee-only entrance?
Employee-only, yes. The, the main entrance would be in the front of the building.
Anything else? No? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards on this item. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone in opposition to this project? Nope? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and we will go for commission discussion. Who would like to? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah. He explained there are a lot of places now. People are releasing their dogs and all that, and I'm very appreciative that you're going to open another place, because it's very much in need. And I really applaud you for doing what you're doing. So I'm much in favor of the, of the project.
Let me just, I want to just make one quick comment before we go on. Since there is a possible concern about the parking, one of the things mentioned is that the planning commission to review, we monitor any parking complaints resulting from the proposed use, and require the planning commission to review or modify new conditions of approval if issues remain unresolved. Is there any interest on the commission in, in perhaps scheduling a review in six months on the parking?
You know, if, if you look at the floor plan, there's only two exam rooms and one surgery, so I don't think you're going to see more than two people there at a time. So I really don't think it's going to have a problem with parking. If it was a larger office and took a lot of, a lot of animals in at the same time, but they'll only schedule a maximum two people at the same time, so I don't think it's a problem.
Okay. Anyone else? Good, okay. Okay, who wants to make a comment? Anybody else? Nope? Okay. Let me just say, okay, Commissioner Hockes?
I guess I would want to be sure that, you know, sometimes when a facility like this opens, people get some strange ideas about what might happen, or what to do with a stray animal they find. And, you know, if there's, you know, when it comes to the connection the city now has with, you know, the, you know, Inland Valley Humane Society, that maybe the occupant here of this facility might want to leave some instruction on the front of their window about people who find a stray animal, you know, giving them some direction and guidance and, you know, how to deal with the stray, any stray animals they find, because sometimes they might want to just gravitate there and think that that's the place to take it. If it's after-hours, you know, they'll probably need some help with that.
Well, I think in general, I mean, it's good to provide these type of informations, but in general, since it's a vet clinic for dogs, and the resident probably know that if they're going to take them to the vet, they'll probably know that that's something that's their pet, that they need to take care of and pay for, and, and, you know, hopefully come back to pick up their pets after the surgery. But sometimes these surgeries are not that cheap. I heard it can be thousands of dollars as well. So for that reason, I, I mean, it's just a regular, to me, it's almost like a regular vet, and hopefully it costs a little bit less, so.
Okay, my comment is...
Can I ask? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
We keep talking about dogs. This is for dogs, cats, and...
Dogs and cats.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Dogs and cats, we, we won't be doing small, we won't be doing lizards or aviary. Basically just domestic animals.
All right.
Dogs and cats.
Thank you.
All right. My comment is short and sweet. This is a wonderful service. I appreciate it. I think it's necessary. And, you know, there's a lot of dogs that are in that position, and at least now, they'll have someplace to go and be taken care of properly, and hopefully, you know, get a little more life out of them, and, you know, in a happy life. So, and I thank you for, thank you for being a resident here, and thank you for deciding to open that clinic in West Covina. So if there's no further discussion, is there a motion on this item?
Can I give you a resume number?
Yeah, I'm going by the order here, so.
Yes, okay. Yeah, but I don't go by order.
Okay.
You know me. The resume number would be 19-6007. And we have a motion by Holtz and a second by...
Second by Kennedy. Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, sir. Thank your, thank your mother also for the work she's done, and welcome to West Covina.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item number two, which is our second public hearing. This is a tentative parcel map, number 19-10, sequo exemption, section 15303. The applicant is James Quee at 2211 West Merced Avenue. Mr. Anderson, who will be presenting that? The staff report.
Our planning assistant, Renee Aguilar, will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Chairman, fellow planning commissioners, and members of the public. Tonight I will be presenting tentative parcel map number 82458 and administrative use permit number 19-34 and 19-35. A tentative parcel map is a subdivision of land consisting of four or less contiguous parcels under the same ownership. Tonight's proposal consists of two proposed parcels as part of the subdivision. The house on parcel one requires an administrative use permit for maximum unit size exception. The proposed house exceeds 35% floor area threshold, and because the house is two stories, the proposed house on parcel two requires an administrative use permit because the proposed house is two stories. As a result, planning staff did recommend to the applicant that they, that they consider a one-story for parcel two to lessen potential privacy impacts for neighboring single stories. The proposal is considered to be categorically exempt pursuant to section 15303, class one new construction, and section 15315 minor land divisions, as the proposal involves a construction of new single-family dwellings and a residential subdivision resulting in four or fewer lots. Currently, the 20,009 square foot subject property has an existing 1,272 one sto, 1,272 one-story square foot house. As you can see behind me, there, I have highlighted, I've illustrated two little flags, and those are two existing flag lots, one across the street from the subject property and one behind it. So we have one right there, and that is a two-story, and the house in the front is a one-story. Now, I have one down here. Both houses on, on this subdivision are one-story. A public notice for tonight's public hearing was sent to 155 owners and occupants, and planning staff did not receive any letters or calls of concern. Parcel one is proposed to be a 7,500 square foot, 60-foot wide, 125-deep rectangular-shaped lot. And parcel two is proposed to be a 12,509 square foot, 80 feet wide, 125-feet flag lot with a 125-feet-deep, 20-feet-wide flag strip. And those are a lot of numbers, and I will show you an illustration in a bit. Here we go. So as you can see, parcel one is at the front of, on, on Merced Avenue, and then the flag lot, parcel two, is in the back. Now, parcel one will have vehicular access... then the flag lot parcel two is in the back. Now, parcel one will have vehicular access off of Merced Avenue with a twenty-foot driveway. That's right here. And their garage is going to be right here. And then that flag lot comes in on this side right here with a twenty-foot wide driveway leading to the back of the house. Both homes will be similar in size, along with the same number of bedrooms and bathrooms, different floor area ratios and lot coverage due to the different lot sizes. Staff has privacy, staff does have privacy concerns with the proposal of a two-story on parcel number two, because it may not be, it may not be possible to construct a two-story house without second-floor windows looking into the surrounding neighbors' yards. Privacy concerns are lessened because there are existing two stories in the neighborhood. Staff did an analysis, and there are four other two-story homes in the neighborhood. Planning staff, as I mentioned, conducted a neighborhood survey and assessed twenty-five homes within the surrounding area. As proposed, parcel one will have a forty percent floor area ratio, and parcel two will have a twenty-four percent floor area ratio. Both houses would be two times larger than the average size of the surrounding homes. And as I mentioned, there are four existing two-story homes in the surrounding area. And the top picture is a street view looking into the house. No. Yes. Looking into the house, as you can see, a one-story, the house tends to be more so put in the back. And then the picture on the bottom is across the street. As I mentioned, there are a few two-story houses in the neighborhood, and that is the two-story house that I was talking about. And these are some architectural renderings that the applicant has provided to paint a picture of what the potential houses, if approved, would look like. The architectural renderings present a minimal traditional architectural style with craftsman elements, gable roof with horizontal siding. Flat roof tiles, smooth stucco exteriors, wood-trimmed windows and shutters. The first floor consists of a kitchen, family room, living room, dining room with one bedroom and its own bathroom, and of course, a two-car garage. The second floor consists of three bedrooms and three bathrooms. These are the elevations behind me, and the windows on the second floor for the north and the south elevation face single-story homes, and the applicant has indicated on the plans that the windows will be obscured glass to minimize potential privacy impacts. Now, as I mentioned earlier, both homes tend to be similar in size, same number of bedrooms. So at the end of the day, they're the same homes, amenities may be dispersed a little differently. Same with the second floor. And again, the windows on the second floor are obscured glass on the elevations which would face the single-story homes. That would be the north and the south elevation. Now, the west and the east would face two-story homes. And staff recommends approving resolutions for tentative parcel map number eight-two-four-five-eight and both administrative use permits, number nineteen dash thirty-four and nineteen thirty-five, and subcommittee numbers nineteen fifty-nine and nineteen sixty. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here long, as well as the homeowner. From my understanding, the homeowner doesn't speak very good English, so there would be that translation. So that, again, thank you.
Thank you. The homeowner is the one who currently lives on the house that's there now, so.
From my understanding, no, not, not as of right now. The, from what I've been told is that the applicant, the homeowner will, is planning on moving into one of the homes as soon as it is built.
Ah, okay. All right, thank you. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Holtz?
Do you happen to have a footprint showing both houses on the lot, what they would look like once they're on the lot, in your report, anywhere?
This would be it, right here.
But I'm looking for the yard and stuff.
Are you looking for one lot or both lots?
Both lots.
Go ahead and pull out all the way.
Okay.
So it's a little confusing here, but this, this is the outline of the house. What they're doing here is all that other stuff that's there is what's existing. So they're showing the existing in a, in a shaded, and then the darker lines are the proposed.
It's a real deep lot. I mean, and the home that sits there now is, yeah, that sits way in the back, so. I couldn't figure out which is the, I don't want to say grass area, but open area.
Would you, would you like me to show the renderings? The renderings might, might help a little bit. The, the lot depth right now for the single, the parcel right now is two hundred and fifty from the street, you know, to the rear property line. I'm sorry, the front property line to, to the rear property line.
So how far is it from the rear property line to the back house? Do you know that dimension?
Twenty-nine feet. Twenty-nine feet from the rear property line to the beginning of the, yeah, exactly.
And I guess it would be similar for lot one?
Lot, lot one is fifty-four feet from the back of the house to where the parcel two would begin.
Okay. And how many feet is it from the first house to the Merced, to the property line in front?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five, okay.
Yeah, and then the second story is offsetted to comply with the thirty feet, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Nope? Oh, question, Commissioner Hockes?
Yeah. Just looking at this rendering and looking at the, at the plan layout, it appears that the, I guess that would be the north property line. If you were to roughly scale or judge where that would be according to this rendering, where would you, where would you guess that would be, or would you estimate that would be? You might point it on with me with a laser pointer. Because if you look at the, at the plan layout, on the, the north property line, you know, to the north side of, or the north elevation of parcel two, it looks like there's about a five and a half foot, five, you know, or five foot, five inch.
Yeah.
Setback from the property line.
That's for the first floor, and then the second floor is ten feet, five inches, or ten feet, six inches, sorry.
Yeah, but to the first floor. Yes, my point is, is that this rendering, that, yeah, the rendering seems to be highly misrepresentative of what is actually proposed. With there only being five feet setback from the property line of the fence, that rendering gives the impression that there's twenty, thirty feet to the, you know, to the fence line, which is clearly not the case. It's a very misrepresentative rendering.
Are you talking about the side setback or the back, the rear?
The side setback. When you look at the rendering, it doesn't, that doesn't, that rendering is really disproportionately misrepresented.
Is that the, the north or the west?
On the north, north, the north side. The rear rendering, they're looking from the rear, looking from the rear, there.
So keep, keep in mind, first of all, that you're not approving the rendering, you're approving the site plan.
True.
But let me kind of cover.
But I just want to point that out for the fellow commissioners, if they think that that side yard is going to look anything like that.
This is the five and a half foot side yard we're talking about.
Oh, is that the fence there?
Yeah, this is the fence right here.
Okay.
Now, there's a wider area on the other side, it's probably about twenty, it's like a twenty-five feet. So this is a twenty-five foot side yard.
I mistook, I mistook the, the fence for, for a walkway.
Ah, okay. Yeah, that's, no, that's a fence, yeah.
Okay, okay, I stand corrected.
But what is, what, what are the requirements for the side setback? Five feet or?
Five feet for the first floor and ten feet for the second floor.
Yeah, it meets the setback.
Gotcha.
Yeah, no, the applicant's not proposing any variances or any slight modifications to encroach into the required setbacks.
So on one side, on this particular side that you were pointing, the red mark, it's five feet currently. On the first floor, in the second floor, it's ten feet. But then on the other side, they gave us twenty-five feet versus five feet? It could have been five feet as well?
That is correct, yeah. Twenty-five feet for the first floor and twenty-nine feet and a half for the second floor.
So the distance between the two houses, that would be a good?
About a hundred and four feet.
Hundred, a hundred and four feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? No? All right, I'm going to call the applicant up. Mr. Kui, please come up.
Hi, good evening. My name's James Kui. I'm architect, I'm a descendant to the owner for this project. This land is a buy from, bought from his daughter, a daughter. His daughter is a, built a two-house for his parents, and one's for the son, the husband, one for daughter's parents, and others for the, the son of the parents. So, yeah, so this is why he, he not the, he not the developer, and house not for the sale. So any recreation, I need to match the city required. And so I will answer all the questions about the commissioner.
So they're being built for, for occupation by the family, huh?
Yeah.
Both, both homes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Kui?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hockes?
How many occup, how many occupants in each house are you expecting will be living in each?
Only two parents. They have us, the granddaughter, they have a four granddaughter. So there'll be some leaving to, they together take care. Why not they live together? So really crowded, and also they live in West Covina also.
Four in the front house?
Uh, no, two and two, the parents. And then the, the kid will be sometime within the, we day, and they will be, go to school, or we can, they come together.
So the front house, how many total, we, we living there regularly?
Maybe four and two kids or four parents.
Okay, and, and in the rear?
Same.
Same, four and four?
Yeah.
And then visitors vary?
Yeah, let's together, take care together.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? Nope. So is somebody living in the house now that's there, that fourteen, that, that small house that's, that's there now?
Why not it's the tenant, because the, so too old, we demo later, so.
Some, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that'll be demolished, obviously. Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions? Nope. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the project? I don't have any other cards? Nope. We will turn to those that are against. That would be Mr. Miller.
So not too long ago, we had, in front of the council and the planning commission, the whole ADU issue. My next-door neighbor, who bought the property, ended up renting it out because a family had issues with the area, couldn't build a ADU of adequate size. You know, he has a large lot, and all he's allowed to do is nine hundred square feet. So really, the question is, is, and, you know, it's funny that the staff is pushing for this, is the, is West Covina really for developers or for the residents? What I find funny in the renderings is, if it really is for a family, why does the rendering show a wall in between the, the buildings and no door in between? I really think this is an investment property, and allowing this basically allows for more development of West Covina and basically more density, which, you know, a lot of us are against, because it changes the face of our community. You know, growing up in Glendale, I saw it firsthand. Of course, not quite as bad because it was mostly apartment buildings, but still, it does change, and we're already seeing the change in the last ten years. You know, so really, I think this is going to open up for more and more development, for investment, not for families. You know, if it was okay to do an ADU and do a decent size when you have a big enough lot, so, you know, what's the difference? Oh, and also, another thing is, you know, having obscure windows, you can still open the window. How, what, and having small windows. I thought there was minimum sizes for egress in case of emergency. I didn't see windows on those elevations that would allow for that. So how would that be possible?
Thank you. You want to speak on against?
Against.
Okay. Angela Gillingham?
Yes. I, I don't understand, I know someone said it's a large lot, but why, why do we have the same-size square footage home distributed on two different parcels for the same-size home? That just doesn't make sense. There's got to be some continuity there. I mean, if you're going to place a large house, and then you should have another large house, but you should have equal around, sized lot parcels. I think the parcel distribution of square footage and the housing that he would like to put on there doesn't make, it's a visual, it's an optic thing. It doesn't make sense. I, I, I understand he says his family's going to be moving in there, but in the future, are, are we going to be looking at this for future people who might, they may stay short time and leave, but that doesn't make sense. And my next question is, what's behind the second house? Is there a residential home behind there? There is. I didn't see that.
Yes, there is.
Okay, so the flag that's on there is the second home? Is that correct? What's the little flag?
Yeah, exactly. So the little flag is a flag lot, obviously, and is a second story.
So there's a home right behind that flag that faces the back, the second home that's where it would be built.
Exactly. Yeah. That lot in the middle is just a, you have the house up to the front.
Okay.
Let me point that out. The lot right there. Now, all of this is just open space. So technically, if they look out, they're just going to see that house there, and this would just be vacant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just think continuity, I, I just, and also, the sizing. I, I don't know why two, three thousand square foot homes need to be built on lots that are absolutely not distributed well. So I would just have the applicant possibly look at distributing the same-size house or scaling down the houses to be properly scaled for each parcel. I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Mr. Kui, would you like to come back up and address what was said in opposition, please?
Perhaps, perhaps I should answer some of the questions first, because I don't think they're, the applicant question. Egress windows are for bedrooms, so you only need an egress window if there's a bedroom. Bathrooms don't need egress windows, hallways don't need egress windows. So that, that's the answer. Mr. Kui has designed it so you don't need egress windows on the side elevations, which is one thing we encourage people to do. There is a good point about obscure windows. There's a couple ways to handle those kind of windows. You could require a fixed window without opening it. You could also require a, a clear-story window or a high window, like we, we, that's more typical what we do. That obscure windows can work, but, and there, all the windows are in bathrooms, as I understand it, on the side elevation?
Yes, only bathroom windows.
So there, you know, and a lot of them are like behind the toilets, not like a place that people are going to be standing anyway. But, but if there was a concern, those are, there's other ways to go about it. And then.
Well, nobody's voiced a concern, have they?
Yes, one of the, the, there was a mention of why, you know, that maybe obscure windows might.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's voiced a concern when the letters went out, but.
Oh, on the neighbors? No, we did not get any calls.
No, nothing at all.
I think that's all. I just wanted to clarify those couple things. Oh, I did have one other thing, but for Commissioner Hing asked a question. The, it keeps escaping me. Oh. Oh, just keep in mind, as we talk about floor area, so we use the term floor area. Our code uses the term floor area, which is not the same as house size. Floor area includes everything that's within four walls, which includes a garage. So when we talk about a 3,000 square foot house, we're really talking about a 25 or 20, it's basically 2,500 square foot house with a 497 square foot garage. That's 3,000 square foot floor area per the West Covina municipal code. So I just wanted to clarify that. That can be very confusing when we talk about it.
Before you start, let me, I have a quick question regarding that.
I have a quick question regarding this particular parcel map. Can you draw the line, if, let's say, without the driveway? Can you help me point that little red button of yours? So without the driveway, the parcel would be split between, can you point to the end of the first lot, right there? So it just goes straight up? So it looks pretty much split in half with the exception of, because of the driveway, which is required by fire, I believe. It's 20 by 100 and something. So that's like 2, 3,000 I would give or take?
Yes.
You are correct that it's split at 125 each, so it's a 250, so each lot would have 125 depth.
Okay, so it's actually split in the middle with, with the exception of the driveway and the square footage of that's...
The pole of the flag is what we call, that's why it's called a flag lot, because it looks like a flag and that, that's the pole. That's required, that's required by our code, not the fire department. It's required by the municipal code for subdivisions, but you are correct.
So that portion, that portion of the driveway is actually added to the back unit?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, so the total lot is 250 divided by half, that's 125. So that is split in half to some extent. Okay.
Anything else from staff? Nope? Okay. Mr. Kueh, did you want to address?
Okay, yeah. I just remind you, the living area, each house is only 2,500 for each living area. So plus garage will be 3,000. So, okay, these two-house design is similar and just flip, one's the design and another just flip another side, so it'll look like same. Because the owner, the one that's doing it himself, they say more ease to contract the size and the room like a standard. So you don't want a big house and if, if two-story and they can look like same, I don't know, it's no problem for, for the design. So we can answer that question.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant while he's here?
So each house is three bed, three or four?
Four bedrooms, four bathrooms.
Yeah, four bathroom.
Anything else for the applicant? While he's there? Commissioner Harkes? Holtz, Hing, nothing for the applicant while he's here? Nope? Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Okay, I'll close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. We'll go to a commission discussion. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, I, I have a lot of issues with this house. First of all, as everybody knows, I'm not a fan of two-story houses. You don't even have a, how are you gonna get to grandma's house? You don't even have a door to get between the brick wall. So you're gonna have to go all the way out driveway and go all the way to, to grandpa's house? You know, number one, four bathrooms? Does everybody get their own bathroom or what? I see in the future, and I'm near future, it's just gonna be a rental property. It's a blighted area, it's a nice, huge lot, but at this point, you're gonna have to downscale because I can't be for it. Thank you.
Commissioner Harkes?
Yeah, I'll, I'll sort of ditto what Commissioner Kennedy said. And as far as the downscaling goes, it's certainly gonna start with the second story on both homes. The fact that there's some second-story homes in the area is just a matter of planning mistakes of the past that we don't want to repeat. And if there's really a need for providing more single-story living space that could be provided on parcel two, you know, assuming that this subdivision still moves forward, there certainly is more room on parcel two that could still fit within the floor ratio very easily without a second floor. So, no, the second floor, the second stories aren't, they just don't fly.
Well, I'd like to, I'm, I'm gonna, oops. Well, first of all, I think what they're trying to do is combine two family. Not necessarily the daughter living in the, they're thinking about the two parents, two different sets of parents living in those two houses. I guess they're thinking of their senior years and put them together, it's easier to get to and manage all four at the same time, or six, anyway, so. I'm not sure exactly how that's gonna work, but if you do have two in-laws living in the same lot but different house, that might work. I just can't imagine living in the same house with two in-laws. I, I just, for, for me. Anyway, they somehow managed to find a lot that they're gonna build for the two parent, two separate parents. I guess one is the guy's parents, one is the girl's parents. So in itself, in a nutshell, it is different lot, and I think that's what they're trying to do, the subdivisions. And I think the wall is nice, so you get some privacy to some extent for those two individual homes, but it's very difficult. I wasn't gonna talk about this, but I will. The state of California has a housing shortage. I wasn't aware how much. However, 20 years ago, I looked into that and I read an article regarding the ADU. That was 20 years ago. I was thinking, wow, 30 years from now, 25% of our population will be seniors. And that was the age gap that they were trying to help regarding the ADU. We haven't hit, what? That was 20 years ago. So we have 10 more years before it hit full-blown 25% of our populations will be seniors. I'm not sure how we're gonna deal with that, and the state probably knew that they cannot take care of all the seniors 10 years from now. So that brings us to the homeless issues today. I'm not sure if that's kind of involved with this whole issues. Regarding this, also last week, our new governor, our governor, had just passed quite a few laws regarding housing issues, regarding ADU. There, I don't know how many, five, six of them? Yes, quite a few. The other issues that they actually passed was they made the whole state of California, what do you call it? Rent control. So because of the housing shortage, we understand that, and part of the reason is I don't fully understand why we're having shortage when we're building 100 and something homes every year. However, our population seems to increase by 500,000 a year. So even though we built 100 and something thousand, I think it's permit, Jeff, you can confirm this for me, because I don't really keep track of all the numbers. So every year, we only build 100, but then we have 500,000 people coming into California. I just went to a meeting and I met some members at the meeting and they're like, yeah, my grandmother and my great-aunts and my aunts are coming from Seattle. They're called the Snowbirds. So they bought houses in California, they live here for a few months. So I'm thinking, wow, out of the 100,000 homes that was built in California, if even 30% go to the Snowbirds, we really left with, what? I don't know, 70? So out of that 70 homes, some of them have rich investor coming up from overseas, so we're left with 30,000 homes. So out of a half a million people that actually come to California, we really only have 30,000. I'm just roughly estimating that these are open to the, to the housing market. So how are we gonna take care of our, I guess, homeless housing issues? I mean, it's a huge issue. I just didn't realize how big it is. But we as planning commissioners, a lot of time, I don't realize and put into a number in a nutshell, that what we do also impact that number as well, whether we pass planning or whether we don't pass planning. Like I said, a few months ago, I actually have a homeless that, I lived in West Covina for over 30 years, I've never had homeless or not seen that many throughout the whole city and everywhere. Everywhere you go, not just impacting downtown, it's just everywhere. So, and I remember 20 years ago, I said, when I retired, that's, I thought it was a long time from now, and still is, I don't really want to see a lot of aging population that will be homeless and that I'll be walking around and living, that people that can't afford to live. So anyway, in a nutshell, I don't really have an answer. So I'm just trying to say is, what we do today is also impacting what's gonna happen in the futures and what our housing situation is gonna be. We don't have that many lots in California in terms of large lot with a small house. In the old days, you know, 20, 30 years ago, the homes was only 1,200 square foot, that's considered huge. Today, I guess 10 years ago, average homes that is built today is more than 2,500 square feet. So yes, we live in West Covina, that's a built-out city, and yes, that we do have homes that is built, you know, 900 square foot, that's the norm, 1,200 square foot, and people are just adding on to it. One bedroom here, two bedroom there, one bathroom there. You know, they're adding a lot of frontage, you know, just enlarging the bedroom or the rooms or what have you, which is, you know, piecework. With this particular case, they're actually gonna knock it down and make two brand-new houses. I mean, that's something that we need to look into and actually discuss about our issues or potential issue in the future, whether it's homelessness, whether it's what the governor's doing, whether, I don't know if it's right or wrong, but the number doesn't add, the number just doesn't add up. We can't build fast enough for the people to come in to live in California or who wants to come to California. And like I said, I don't have a solution, per se, but what we do will impact our future, whether it's the resident, whether it's the homeless, whether it's just a lot to think about. So I just want our fellow commissioners and the staff here to also think about this because, like I said, I don't have a solutions, but I feel like all the thing that we do here will impact our future as well. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Holtz?
Well, I think we're talking about overstepping our authority when we say they may rent the house in the back. We don't have a crystal ball what's gonna happen in the future. If they rent it out, that doesn't bother me, in 10 years from now or five years from now. The lot is large, it's, it's, the area needs some, some boost over there. The houses are very nice, they're 2,500 square feet, I don't think that's too large. And there's plenty of space around the houses and all that. So why would we stop somebody that meets all the requirements that the city puts forth and build two nice houses with space in between because we think maybe they'll rent the back house out? That's none of our business. That is none of our business. So I, I don't see how we can turn it down. We don't have any letters from any of the neighbors that are concerned about it or made any concerns about it. So why, why are we making concerns about it? I just don't see it. Some people don't like two-story houses. I mean, if I would buy another house, it would not be a two-story because of my age and because of it's harder to get up and down the stairs and all that. But that's neither here nor there. They're gonna build two nice houses, they're gonna live, the family, they say the family's gonna live in it or not. If they don't, there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, we can't sit here with a crystal ball and say, I bet they're gonna rent it out. So what if they do? It's their property, it's their buildings. So I'm all in favor of this project. I think it'll look nice. And it's two-story, there's a couple other two-stories there, but the area that it's going into is, I don't want to say blighted because I'm gonna make some neighbors mad at me, but it does need some, some pickup down there, and I think that'll be nice. And I think it'll be great down there. I don't see a problem with it. So I'm in favor of the project. I think it'll be good.
Thank you, Commissioner Holtz. You know, if you go out there today and you look what's there, that's not a very pretty house that's there now. It, what is presented to us tonight, what's in front of us tonight, in my view, is a big improvement. Those homes are, I mean, they're, they're pretty much identical, the homes. I mean, the garage is on this side on one, it's on that side on the other, just flip the, you know, flip it. And I've got to, sometimes you have to take people at their word, you know? I mean, the guy, you know, I don't know these people from Adam, but, you know, he's up here and he's telling us what their intent is. And, you know, as Commissioner Holtz said, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but, you know, he's telling us what he's, what his intention is for that property. His family's gonna live in the two homes, they're gonna replace that small, you know, kind of rundown house and put up two nice, simple houses that architecturally are compatible with the neighborhood. The thing that strikes me, and Commissioner Holtz mentioned it also, we contacted, sent out notices to 155 residences within 300 feet of that project, and we received nada. And these are the people that are most impacted by this project. And, you know, there's a saying, I'm kind of using a little bit maybe too often, but if it's good enough for them, it's good enough for me. You know, I mean, Commissioner Vice Chair Hing brought up some interesting housing issues, which there's a lot of relevance to which he says there too, as we go down the line. But, you know, it's a large lot, the houses, the lot's pretty well-divided equally, the two nice homes are going up there, you know, I'm, I don't see an issue with it myself. So absent any further comment, would you like to read the resolution numbers this time, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I would like to do that. We have a tentative parcel map, which would be 19-6008. And then we have administrative use permit 1933, which would be 196009. And then we have administrative use permit 1934, which would be 196010.
Is there a motion on these items? We have a motion by Commissioner Holtz. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chair Hing. May we have a roll call, please? Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Harkes?
No.
Chairman Redholtz? Aye. Motion passes three to two. And this action's final unless appealed to City Council within 10 days. Thank you very much, and we look forward to those two new homes going up. Thank you. Okay. We have reached the point in the agenda for commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Any commissioner have any of what I just said? No, I, I have a, a comment and perhaps a procedural question. It has come to our attention that, that the Rebel Yell has closed and apparently their ABC license has been suspended. That's what's on the door over there. That's what's on the door over there. So, and we all know we went through the whole deal with Rebel Yell and their ABC license. They, we, you know, we extended their hours and we did all that kind of stuff, and now ABC has suspended it. So my question is this, what would happen, or do we know? I mean, what is the process? Would it have to come back to us to be looked at again, or is it just in the hands of ABC and we're out of it?
I think the question I don't know is what that means if ABC suspended it, because if ABC suspended it, then it, then it's a violation, they wouldn't give it back. That would be my guess, but I don't, I don't, I can't. Now, our rule is six months, once they have to be closed, once they're closed for six months, they have to come back through the process. But if they were to open before that, if someone was open before, they wouldn't have to come back, they'd, they'd just be still under the requirements of those conditions of approval.
Wouldn't they have to get approv, if it's a new owner?
Yes.
Wouldn't they have to get approval from the ABC?
That is correct, and I don't know what the suspended license would mean in that circumstance.
Yeah, I don't know if there's, if there's, the next step is revocation as opposed to just suspension.
Typically, when ABC sus, when ABC suspends a license, it's, it's highly likely that it's because they've done something wrong. And in, in cases like that, they would have to go through due process, and so ABC has its own hearing process. So I can go ahead and do a little bit more research on it and then report back to the planning commission.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Jimin.
I've been asked by several residents, uh, what's going on with the old Burger Q with the Reros? Are, are they ever gonna open or, because I keep, everybody keeps asking me, and they said, uh, like, three months ago, they were training everybody, they were gonna open in a month, like, and they were gonna open in June or something. Do we hear anything?
No, we don't, we don't hear anything. They, they have kind of been nibbling around the edges for the past, was it five years? They came back, they came once to the planning commission, got approval, then that expired, and they came back again and got approval. Was that earlier this year or last year? So I, uh, yeah, I don't know. My, my, my guess is that they're, they're not gonna open. Actually, if it was last year, they probably, yeah, it's probably, it, it's probably close to expiring now at any rate, so. I, I don't think they're gonna open, but I can't, just by what I'm seeing.
Well, even though they have a menu board, I wouldn't go there and order anything at this point. Might be a long wait. Any other?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Harkes?
Right. Wanted to get the sense of the rest of, of fellow commissioners, um, about the idea of a study session, maybe for, on the, um, subject of specific plans. There's a lot I'm familiar with when it comes to specific, specific plans, and there's a lot I'm not. And, um, and to the extent that there might be, you know, in the foreseeable future, interest in a specific plan that might be, you know, targeted at a certain part of the city, be good to know what gets a specific plan underway and, you know, what does it really mean to the planning process and the connection with the general plan and, and the role of the commission in that.
This is where the League of California Cities Seminar would be really, really nice to be able to attend. Yep, it would be.
Probably can't do as good a job as being done at one of those things, but, but I can, I can certainly, uh, talk about specific plan and talk about what the general plan sort of suggests in that regard, where and what. And there's various times, there's various reasons people do specific plans. As you probably recall, that's what Queen of the Valley, that you recommend approval of a specific plan for Queen of the Valley. But, and that was for one campus, right? So there, there are a, a variety of, of ways it can be done. So we, we can do that. I, I'm not gonna promise a date right now, but, but we'll put it on the, the schedule and we'll, and it shouldn't, we just find a meeting, we don't have a lot on, and we can do that.
I actually want to add, since our city manager is here, maybe perhaps I can ask that questions for our new commissioners. We used to attend the LEAK, the City LEAK?
League of California.
League of California.
Planning Commissioners Institute.
Right. Um, I was wondering if perhaps there's any way that we can find some monies to pay for the fee for our new commissioners or all the commissioners to attend? I'm not sure if you're the right, be the right person to ask, but I like to ask for that because it was really helpful when I first joined in terms of getting around and getting to know. I understand that, like, um, even us, I mean, things are constantly changing and it's really helpful, especially we're impacting and we're making decisions that's affecting the future of West Corina, and that would be nice. I'm not sure if, if you can, you know, thank you.
I think you planted the seed.
Let me just say for the record, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with Vice Chair Hing on that. It is, I, you know, I've been to, when I first got on here in oh-five, the first time around, I mean, we had, we were flush and we were, we were able to, all of us go and even staff members went back then, and, and I'll tell you what, you learn a lot. And it's only in a couple of days, but you come out of there going, wow, you know, and you learn a lot. And when you, when you're educated like that, you can, uh, make better decisions all around. Mr. Carmody?
Let me just say, commissioners, I agree with you completely. Let me, let me look into it and try and find a way. I know the conference's travel and meeting budget this year was very thin. The, the city manager did not, is not today in attendance at the International City Management Association meeting, nor did he attend the League of California Cities meeting. We're just trying to be very true to our closely balanced budget, but let me look into it. I know it's extremely worthwhile, and the motto of the league is California cities work together. Those are really valuable sessions, so let me, let me look into it.
And also, if you can extend it to our staff as well, because we have quite a few new staff, I know, I know I'm stretching a little.
Oh, my gosh. Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmody. You're alone on that one, uh, King. At the risk of, uh, you know, my better judgment, City Council action.
Well, first, the community development director's report.
Oh, yes, let's do that.
We do, we have forthcoming, we have a, we have a, a little bit of a docket of code amendments we're trying to get on board, which we would like to get one of the city attorneys to come, and we've just been dealing with them requesting that recently. So it's possible, I'll put it out there, it's possible we might not have a meeting on the twelfth, we might have it on the twenty-sixth instead, just because it, it's probably gonna make more sense to have a city attorney present, and it looks like the twenty-sixth a better date for that. I will be in touch with you if that happens. And then, uh, the other thing I'd like to say is, uh, you, you hear clickety-clack of keys behind you over there. It's very nice to have Lydia back. We don't have to worry about doing minutes tomorrow. So I do want to, uh, thank her for coming back and not staying on leave permanently. And City Council action, um, City Council did deny the AUPs for the Small Waters facilities, so that was denied. And then at the next meeting on the fifth, they will be reviewing the Queen of the Valley, uh, specific plan, general plan amendment zone change, EIR.
And they also?
And a code amendment for?
Service stations.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I forgot about that one. Yes, they did deny also the, the code amendment for service, alcohol sales at service stations.
And one other, you know, one other thing we're talking about, we have the temporary signs that we're gonna be looking at, which I believe is the political signs?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, at some point, I'd like us to take a hard look at just our temporary sign criteria as, as a, in general.
That would probably require a study session as well. I can put that on.
So what is the problem with the temporary sign? I, I'm just, uh,
Well, there are, there are signs that are ubiquitous all over this city that are completely prohibited. And, um, you know, those stick signs that stick in the ground and those, yeah, we don't allow those.
But those are only doing political?
No, 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 I'm talking, those are commercial signs, those are business signs.
But these are called wind blades, and they're usually about ten feet tall.
They're at every intersection in the city, you know, and there's just no regulation on them at all.
So let me, let me say one thing, and we, it doesn't mean we can't do what you're suggesting. We are, uh, actually tomorrow, we're, we're, uh, new code enforcement personnel is, is coming on board, and then we're gonna be getting some part-time. So we're gonna try a different, uh, tactic for code enforcement, which, as you're, I think you're all, all of you are aware that over the past ten years or so, we haven't, we, actually, we've reduced staff in code enforcement pretty regularly over the past ten years. Still, we're down to just bare bones, so we're hoping to kind of build that back up and try to be a little bit more proactive in that. So it's the temporary signs that are most noticeable because they're usually left up too long and they start fading or ripping. Banners are in the same, uh, thing as that, so, um, those will be things that we will, you may notice a difference. Doesn't mean we can't talk about temporary signs. We can, uh, we may want to have a study session first to talk about what, what we might want to discuss in that regard, but, um, wind blades are definitely something that, uh, the code doesn't allow, and we did bring it one time several years ago to amend the code, and the council that time declined to do so, so we still have the same code.
And if, if, to get a temporary sign, there's, there's a permit involved with that, right? There's a fee involved with that.
Well, it depends on the application. Not, not every temporary sign requires a fee, but there are some that do, and we could certainly require that.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Anything else, anybody? Absent any other business, we are adjourned. Thank you.